Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Port Clinton City Council, March 11th, 2014. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and a moment of silence for our members who are serving overseas. I would also like you to keep in your thoughts and prayers the family of Dan Wither. Dan was a longtime city councilman. And also Nicole's previous family is. It's because of her recent loss of her father and I want you to go there. They're all support.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. He is the day and the day we pray, and he is the day we pray. He is the day we pray, and he is the day we pray. He is not temptation, but deliverance from evil, the life of the kingdom, and the power and glory of our neighbor. Amen.
The Port Council's councilor, Mike Snyder.
Present.
Ron Offerman.
Present.
Lisa Sardy.
Present.
Dave Bilo.
Excused.
Gary Trolle.
Present.
Nicole Frehman.
Present.
Margaret Phillips.
Present.
Thank you. You have the for you the minutes of the February 15th special meeting, the February 25th regular meeting. And I have reviewed the minutes for the March 6th meeting. I'm sorry, I have to please need a couple corrections, so you should have those up in the next meeting. But I would like to motion to accept the minutes as written for February 15th and February 25th.
So, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Could I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Trolle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. And we are now going to have a presentation by Jamie Byer Grant and from the OCIC, and from Hans Rosebruck from Ohio Edison. Ottawa County's, yes. Not just the, not the resort.
Yeah. I'd like to just take the opportunity to thank council for allowing us to participate in some of the aspects of the project that's being discussed on the waterfront site in the city, and also for inviting Hans Rosebruck with First Energy and myself into the council meeting to go over some of the information and results that came out in economic impact analysis that OCIC and First Energy worked on together to look at the scope of the project that's being proposed by Washington Properties and what the potential impact that this project could have on Ottawa County, the city of Port Clinton, and even beyond just the city and the county. As we continue to look at the business landscape, it's pretty evident that we don't just live and work and play within Ottawa County, but we do truly live in a regional, if not broader economy. And so people from outside of the region, outside of Ottawa County, in our surrounding counties will certainly be impacted by this project as it moves forward in many different ways. So with the information that was provided to us by Washington Properties and the city of Port Clinton, we ran this economic impact analysis. So when you see the numbers, the numbers are for Ottawa County, for the city of Port Clinton. But please keep in mind that in a lot of cases, the information or the numbers will reach into some of the surrounding communities as the workforce is transient and as we look at the supply chain that would be part of the project as it were to develop. So with that, I'm going to introduce Hans Rosebruck. So Hans is going to talk a little bit about the EPLM program and the economic impact data analysis, and kind of a little bit about the software and how the numbers come to be out of the analysis report that we ran. So I'm going to turn it over to Hans.
Thanks, Jamie. As Jamie mentioned, we were asked by Jamie and the CIC board a month, month and a half ago to assist in analyzing the economic spinoffs associated with this project for the waterfront here in Port Clinton. So working with Jamie, we put together some numbers here. But I wanted to go over first, what is an economic impact model? What does economic impact analysis do? You hear a lot of economists, boring or not, talk numbers all the time. So but what does this really mean? What does it do? First, it measures the economic impact of a particular business or a project that a business has on that local community or region. A lot of times you hear economists talk about direct, indirect, and induced effects or impacts. What do those mean? You know, again, we hear people talk about this a lot, but what does it actually mean? Direct impact is what the business is spending right here on the project, okay? Indirect is those ripple effects that go beyond the project alone, okay? So that would be the suppliers and their suppliers that are supplying material and services to that project. And then induced effects are employees that are directly involved in that business or suppliers of that business, when they go out and spend their money on household goods and services. That's what induced means. So a good example would be, in this project, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of concrete business, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong here. You're the contractor. Lot of concrete. Well, concrete, where does it come from? Well, you need cement, you need stone, and you need sand. So people that supply the cement are going to have to up their production, so it means employees and income. People that mine the rock are going to have to have employees in production to provide those, that supply. And lastly, the mine where the sand comes from, the same thing, you're going to have to up production and have employees working to supply that sand. Then you're going to have a means to get that, those raw materials to the production site where the concrete's being made, and then transportation for where the concrete's made to the facility. So you can see how this ripples all the way through the economy. And then, so that would be just a quick, easy example of the indirect benefits, a specific example. Induced would be those employees of this business and employees of, for instance, this concrete facility, after they receive income, they're going to go out and spend their money on, it may be, well, if it's with me, I have three children all getting ready for college, it's going to be on spending for their college education, okay? And maybe somebody going out and buying a new Harley motorcycle. And maybe somebody that needs a new roof. So they're going to take that money and they're going to use it for household goods and services, okay? So that's what the induced effect means. Second item under economic impact and assessment models, what they look at is to really quantify the fiscal impacts on a local government or a state government. In this case, in this model we're going to show you tonight, and the benefits from this type of project, it's going to look at both local, so it would be the city of Port Clinton, Ottawa County, and the state of Ohio. We'll show you the impacts that it could potentially have. I talked a little bit about this with the indirect impacts, but it looks at linkages and their relationships in an economy. In other words, how does a development like this interact with other businesses in the area, okay? And lastly, they can demonstrate multiplier effects. So for instance, if you're spending a million dollars, it may mean another $200,000 or $300,000 being spent elsewhere. It may mean for every job created with this project, it's going to create another job somewhere else. So that's what these models do as well. They look at the multiplier effects both on the business side and the ripple, rippling of that income, that money stream through the economy, and also looks at the job creation from the direct impact it's having on that specific project as it ripples through the economy as well. I'll stop there. Any questions? Any questions, councilor?
Just a couple things on the EPLM software itself. EPLM's been around for more than 35 years. It's been used, it was actually set up at the request of the federal government 35-plus years ago, and since then, it's been used by federal, state, local agencies, the private sector, nonprofit entities, colleges. So it's, to put it in kind of layman's perspective, it's the Cadillac of the economic analysis world when it comes to software. One of the things that's nice about the EPLM software is that it doesn't use estimated or guesstimated data to run the soft, to run the analysis. It actually digs down and drills down to the local level in the community that you're running the analysis on, and extracts current data and information from the local community and uses that information to run the reports. So we're not doing any guessing as to what the tax rates are, or population, or anything like that. It drills down on the most recent data that's available and out there for the geography that you're looking at with the analysis.
Jamie brings up a good point. EPLM is a group of economists out of Minnesota, Minneapolis, that's been around a long time. It's one of the, as Jamie said, a Cadillac model used. And they have it for every county, every community in the United States, basically. You can look at all the linkages. It has the ratios of interaction between those companies for every, every community in the United States. It also has all the tax information for each community. As Jamie mentioned, it's used from the federal government to utilities, to local economic development groups, to colleges, to universities across the country. So it is a well-respected model used, and that's what we use at First Energy as EPLM.
Can you give us an example of what we use this model for lately in some of this area?
Mayor, yes, absolutely. We, in fact, Mr. Sash was there, Mr. Jody was there, Jamie was there, but we had a big meeting the other day, especially on Friday, but we've used it for Davis Fessy here recently and to look at what the economic impact of that steam generator project is that we're undertaking out there, what type of impact that's going to have on the community, so we've used it for that. Mayor, we've also used it across the state of Ohio and across our five-state territory at First Energy for other large projects. Over in Lorain, they're Republic Engineered Steel, as well as US Steel, are doing big projects for steel tubing. We've done analysis for that project there, what that's going to mean for Lorain and actually the surrounding area. So we've used this, I saw on Jamie, I think, for the last 10, probably 15 years across our service territory. If not, non-economic groups ask us to use it for specific projects. We've used it internally too, for our own uses, to find out what impact a project might have on our revenues at First Energy. So we've used it for a lot of different, I guess, uses over the years, from retail projects such as this to manufacturing projects, to even some governmental projects that we've seen.
So, sorry. So in 15 years that we've used this model, obviously, a tracker, I have gone back and measured that, and it has its model, we've put together an economic impact, 15 years later, we see the results of that. How would you say it compares in that, utilizing this model?
How does it compare? I mean, to what we projected versus actual, like, pretty close.
If you have a percentage on it, 90%.
Oh, gosh.
I know, it's very hard. It's only worth putting a put into it. But I'm assuming you have some kind of response.
I can't quantify that for you. I can just say it's been pretty close to what we originally had estimated.
You say you used it internally with First Energy. I'd imagine you wouldn't be using it if it wasn't actually.
Correct. A good example of how we have used it internally is our economic development partners like Jamie, you may remember, we've got a couple hundred counties across the five states. We take all the projects every year that happen in our service territory, we add it all up, and we put it into a model like this to find out really what those induced effects are. Because that's where people spend, in their households, on electronics. And guess what? Electronics use more electricity, right? And you use it on new appliances, that uses electricity. So we have used this internally to model, based on the projects that have in our service territory, what that might mean for future uses across the future.
One thing too, with the economic impact analysis report that First Energy ran through the EPLM software on the Davis Fessy outage, is this would be a great way to look at what that analysis showed when we ran it with the assumptions that were put into it of 25-year contractors, $600 million capital investment, those kind of, you know, that kind of information. And if anybody has driven, I drove from Oak Harbor to Catawba on Saturday, and from Mr. Ez all the way out to Catawba, every parking lot at the hotels, at the restaurants, was packed with out-of-state license plates and with trucks that had trailers with four-wheelers coming off of the lake on it. So when we look at what the bed tax numbers look like as compared to last year at this time, when we look at the sales tax figures as compared to last time, we will be able to gauge what the differences between last year and this year, once those numbers become available. And we can use those to compare them to the analysis that First Energy ran through EPLM to see, you know, how close there that model was at predicting or estimating what the impact would be of that project for the lake.
Maybe the other thing I like to mention is typically, we've used this for manufacturing projects, but this is different. Usually, they don't use it for retail. The reason I say it as retail is usually just typically, again, recirculates those induced dollars in your community, just recirculates already here. This project, my understanding is, is a lot different than that. This project, to me, is going to bring income or capital, wealth, money in from outside the area and bring it to Port Clinton, to Ottawa County, you know, North Russell High. One of them, in my opinion, where instead of just reshuffling monies, it's bringing new wealth into the community. So that's another reason we wanted to look at this, because it's a wealth generator, or what we perceive as a wealth generator, is not, it's not just going to recirculate money. You're going to have people come here to use the convention center, the hotel, I mean, so on and so forth, so all year long.
Okay, so the scope of the project. At last Thursday night's council meeting, Washington Properties presented their concept of the waterfront development project and what the scope of that project would entail. So we took the information that Washington Properties provided to us on the scope of the project and used these numbers to estimate and run the analysis for the economic impact report. So estimated value of new construction has been anywhere between 60 and 70 million. We chose to be conservative on that number and go look at $60 million in new capital investment on site, 333,000 square feet on the project site. And then it will take an estimated 500 contractor and construction jobs over a five-year period to construct the project that's being proposed, which we averaged out to 100 construction workers per year over a five-year period. And we looked at right around $12 a day that they would spend in the local community on gas, cigarettes, food, you know, any dry cleaning, groceries, whatever. So if you look over a five-year period at those 500 jobs, just the construction and contractor spending alone locally on a very conservative level is projected at $1.25 million. And then when you look at, once the project is completed, what are the new direct jobs that will be on-site for the waterfront project? What are the new direct jobs to be created? It's estimated at 585 jobs. New direct payroll that would be generated out of those 585 jobs is projected to be $11 million, and the average payroll per employee is right around $18,800. And what I can tell city council, how we arrived at the direct payroll and the average payroll per employee, again, we looked at the nature of the project, lodge, a conference center, retail, restaurant, service sector types of jobs. The likelihood that all 585 of those jobs would be full-time, 40-hour a week salary positions is just unrealistic. So what we looked at is what, looking at a portion of those jobs being part-time, and we looked at 32 hours a week, so we averaged out 32 hours a week for the 585 jobs. And then we looked at what is the average hourly wage of individuals within the service sector, and we came to a conclusion that $12 an hour was probably a realistic average that would give us a very conservative yet realistic number. So that's how we came to the $18,800 in average payroll. The other thing too to remember, and I'm not sure if it shows it in the presentation, but when we input the data, we realized that once the project is complete, 585 people aren't just going to show up to work on the next day. There's going to be a phase in of jobs. So we phased those jobs in over a couple-year period, which means that the direct payroll was phased in from zero to $11 million. So understand that this isn't, you know, day one, turnkey, you open your shop, 585 people show up, $12 an hour, 32 hours a week. We phased everything in because we felt that that was probably the realistic expectation of how the project would unfold in the community. So we wanted to be realistic in what our expectations and assumptions were going into the analysis that was generated. Any questions on that?
To go back again, that initial slide I talked about with the direct, indirect, and induced benefits, this is a mountain for the aggregation of those benefits put together. So total economic impact of this project, almost $150 million. New jobs supported, 702. That includes the numbers Jamie just gave you, but also includes those supplier jobs and then induced jobs that we talked about before from people spending household income based on income flowing in from this project. Total new payroll supported, close to 50 million. And then total household spending, again, based on direct, indirect, and induced benefits, about almost 54 million dollars, okay? As Jamie said, I think she started the conversation out very well in explaining that this may necessarily not be for Ottawa County alone, because let's face it, people are going to probably drive in from Lucas County, they're going to drive in from Sandusky County, probably going to drive in from Erie County that work there too, so, but a majority of them will be based here. So these numbers aren't reflective of just Ottawa County alone, it's the surrounding region. Again, going back to the original slide, we talked about the direct, indirect, induced, but we also talked about the fiscal impacts to local government, and that's basically what this slide shows. Again, these are all based on current Port Clinton, Ottawa County, and state of Ohio taxes. So we're looking at a yearly, or average yearly increase, once the project's done, as Jamie said, it ramps up over five years, roughly $6.1 million in increased property taxes. Sales tax here locally in the county of almost $700,000. Income tax of almost $700,000 additional, again. Jamie, I'll defer to you on the bed tax. You can explain that better than me.
Sure. On the bed tax, we estimated based on some numbers provided to us by the Ottawa County Visitors Bureau of room rental capacity, what percentage, average percentage over a 12-year period, our rooms rented within hotels in Ottawa County, as well as what rate, what is an average rate over a 12-month period for those rooms. And then out of that, we generated the bed tax, estimated bed tax collection of about $140,000. And understand that half of that goes to the city and half of it goes to the county, but that doesn't mean that all of these numbers just go right into a big pot of money or a general fund that the city or the county can just, you know, start paying bills out of. For instance, the county portion of the bed tax goes to the Ottawa County Visitors Bureau to help fund marketing and promotion of the tourism and service sector in Ottawa County. So the county might not necessarily get all $70,590 of that, that money would flow to the Visitors Bureau. So I think one thing that's important to understand is, you know, these dollars don't just go into one big pot that they can just start writing checks out of to pay for, you know, any type of activity that the city or the county might do, might want to engage in, but you know, some of them do have, are allocated for certain types of functions or activities. Bed tax is an easy example of that.
Did you say this is for year? Those figures, this whole sheet?
Yeah.
Yes, this would be the increase in taxes based on this. But again, as I mentioned, council folks, is that this project tax, again, it takes in the direct, in other words, the project itself, the hotel, convention center, the indirect and the induced. So the 6.1, again, may not just be in property taxes garnered by Ottawa County, it may be somebody's home over in Lucas or Erie County that are driving over.
And it's not just because, it's not just because of the Washington Properties project, it would be that project plus if somebody built a new home or bought a new home or, you know.
But based on the Washington Properties project.
Right.
Without that project, none of this would be there, so.
Yep.
And then the last bullet there, under state tax, you can see the state's increase in sales and income, which I guess if you're a state employee, that's great, but, or if the state revenues were greater than the local government, right?
Right.
Any questions on the taxes?
This slide is kind of hard to see, but you can see it better in the power, in the handout that you received. The bracket, this looks at the total household spending impact. It looks at it on a local level or regional level, and then on like a non-site, non-site specific level. So local level is what's in the bracket, which I think is the most important piece that you, that you as council will be interested in. It talks about groceries, restaurants, and bars, personal items, what else is on there? Prescriptions, vehicle repairs, medical supplies. When you go down the list and you think of everything that would be impacted here locally within the city and within the community on household spending. Then regional spending, you can, you know, hospitals, or going outside possibly to buy a new car. And then non-site-based expenditures would be things like your utility bill or your mortgage expenses to finance that, the new house or the new purchased home. Those might not necessarily be with an institution or business within Ottawa County, they could be with somebody outside. So those are non-site-specific expenditures that could be, that could be realized as a result of the project. And the columns start with year 2015 and go out to years 2021, so you'll see a couple of slides with these columns. So, so that's, wait, no, that's what the columns are.
Maybe an ignorant question. None of the prices increased throughout the whole chart, please, in 2020?
That's because we're anticipating that construction will start in 2015, and that goes back to those construction jobs of 100 jobs per year for the first five years. Then in year six, you'll start to see numbers increase because of the new, the new permanent jobs on-site being increased. So that's why the numbers.
So even if we have the same 100 people working here for four years, once again, bigger question, the price of groceries isn't going to go up, and how can I have to spend more? Same with the price of gas?
This is a conservative estimate.
Well, but if you look at it enough, you do have, yeah, I apologize, you do need reading glasses, or a large bank can find lessons with all this, but you did look at the data last year, and now I apologize because of this as well. You do, you do see groceries are a good example, it went up to 1.5 million, where before it was just a couple hundred thousand dollars, so.
Yes, banded out.
Correct.
Twenty years.
And we don't figure any inflation in this, not at all, so. But you're right, there would be inflationary pressures that would bring that number up. Correct. So again, you can look at specific impacts it'll have on specific sectors of the economy here. I guess groceries being the largest at 1.5 million, well, I'm sorry, non-site expenditures 9 million, so. Any questions about how these numbers break down?
Does the economic impact take into account any kind of extra services that are going to have to be provided by the local, state, federal government towards people who are going to... going to move in and may not reach the particular? For example, you're making eighteen thousand dollars a year, you're a single parent, you have two kids, I'm assuming you're below the poverty levels at that point?
If.
And does this take into account what monies have to be paid by the government to assist those people in everyday living?
That's a very good question. No, it doesn't. It doesn't, it doesn't include any of those numbers, it doesn't include any type of environmental impacts, or any type of historical, cultural impacts whatsoever. This is strictly an economic.
Okay.
Analysis.
And in your studies throughout the years, you find that that's, those factors don't really weigh down the predicted economic impact?
That's a policy maybe, that's what you're deciding on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
The last slide we thought was important to look at was the real estate impacts, in other words, as far as the real estate industry specifically, what impacts would this project have on that here in the area? This is, this is Ottawa County. You see the first year of construction, a total of seventy-four household units with the impact that, and you just go across hotel, retail, office, industrial hospital. And you can see in 2021, which is after constructions, the impacts it will have on other real estate functions within the community.
And again, that's just indirect and direct.
Right. So by the year 2021, the project's basically supporting over three hundred household units. The non-residential support of over three hundred thousand square feet of, you know, commercial office, institutional, you can count government, schools. And certainly that goes back to your question, as far as schools, for instance, and government. It shows that, you know, and it's very small, I'm going to be quite honest, thirteen hundred square feet for schools, sixteen hundred square feet for government. In other words, that, the model's projecting that because this project, government will need, will need that much extra space.
Okay.
To do the work development.
Thank you.
To regulate whatever their regulations. So I guess that, I'm sorry?
Or add an extra fire in.
Yeah, exactly, thank you. But again, back to your question before, it doesn't, this is strict economic, it's part of the, other factors that go into a project evaluation.
Actually, IMPLA stands for Impact Analysis, so it helps, one of the purposes of the, of the software is to help community or government with planning purposes on how a particular project could affect.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Please, just like the regular thing, state your name and address.
Dan Binkie, two 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 Adams. The economic numbers that we heard, would they be similar if a similar project was put on a different location, say at the Great Scott area, would the figures be somewhat similar?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're not.
Because it's within the city of Portline, it's not site specific to the actual address or geographic location, it's more community locations or within the city limits, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Roger Smith, two eighteen West Fourth Street. The question I have is that on that five hundred and eighty-some jobs, is that based on a hundred percent occupancy of the building? All the hotels full, the shops full, what, what percentage is that at?
I, I would actually defer to Washington Properties, they provided us with that information, but I know that they have a multiplier effect that they do specifically on the lodging, that it takes roughly one point three individuals for every one hotel room to support just the hotel capacity. So, you know, those were the, that, this was information provided as you asked by a developer.
Do you know what it is?
Highly deferred to a developer. I can say over the, over the twelve-month period with the hotel capacity, just to use that, we, we looked at, I believe it was about, and now this is an average from January through December, understanding that some of those months are low, but I believe the average percentage we used on room occupancy was right around sixty-five or seventy-five per occupancy.
Right.
Now that's an average, in the summer months it was much higher than that, and in the winter months when there's no other real activity going on, it was lower.
Yeah, but you made a statement that a lot of our hotels and that are full. This is temporary, because we have a big.
Correct, absolutely, correct. Yeah, this, this year is an anomaly. This year is definitely an anomaly.
Okay, thank you.
But Jamie might want to explain, again, the nature of this, is you have a convention center which will attract people all year round, even in the winter. Obviously, that won't be as much as the summer, but.
And, and under the, the, the occupancy percentage is based on 2013 numbers, it was not based on 2014, so the, the percentage has, that we used in this analysis has took nothing into account with the ice fishing and the David S. E. outage into how we calculated those numbers. So it would have been based on occupancy last year, in the twenty-first.
Is, is the number of full or part-time employees, does that fluctuate with the season? Is that calculated?
Well, it will, and in the calculation that we used, we looked at, you know, again, in the off-season, people probably aren't going to be working forty hours a week, but in during the high season, people could be working forty to fifteen to sixty hours a week. So when you average that out, that's how we came to the thirty-two hours a week that we used. So, so we, yeah, we looked at, we looked at the nature of the jobs that would be created as well as taking into account that, just, just the nature of the seasonal business in Ottawa County and the tourism industry. It's not forty hours on-year-round, but it will fluctuate. So we took, looked at an average overall.
And you probably took into consideration that a lot of these shops might not operate for eight months a year?
That went into the, just kind of the assumptions that we, that we put into that average hour per week.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in the hallway that has any questions? I see you, Rick.
I couldn't see you.
None?
None.
Okay. Mr. Noter?
Yes, the first slide said that.
Name and address.
Oh, Rick Noter, six oh eight East Ferry Street, City. First slide it said to quantify fiscal impacts on local and state governments. We've seen income impacts, are you going to now go into what the cost would be?
Again, as I mentioned, with the councilperson, that, this model does not look at that. And I wasn't asked to do that.
So things like, you know, well, anyways, any cost to the city, or, or the state for that matter, because the city may be on the hook for six million dollars in grants and whatever if they come from the state, then that's a cost to the state.
What I would say, what I would say is, is I agree, I mean, that's a decision for the council, and as I said, the IMPLA software is impact analysis planning, so it helps provide information and statistics to help communities with planning. And I would, I would certainly think that the numbers provided out of this analysis would help the city in determining whether or not the project was financially feasible when we looked at all of the aspects of it, but that's not something for us to determine.
It's just the income side, okay. When you came up with the property tax numbers, did you consider tax abatements?
No.
No? And they are generally ten to twelve years, is what I've seen, I think?
Ten to fifteen years.
Ten to fifteen years of tax abatement, and they're not in these figures necessarily?
What I will still say is tax abatement cannot be used on retail development, so we could not do a traditional enterprise-owned tax abatement program for this particular property because of the nature of the industry, of the properties and the.
Or, or Jamie, again, we could talk about indirect and the induced, you can't, you can't do a tax abatement, either enterprise-owned or CRA-owned homes either, so.
And that would also go into part of the, the planning and decisions that the city and the community would have to make, which those are all undetermined, so it's, you know, to make an assumption as to what those kind of levels would be, we don't have.
You made some other assumptions though, Jamie.
We made some other assumptions based on concrete numbers that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Victor Fleming, three three zero Ferry Street. Does the county have a workforce of five hundred and eighty-five people that need jobs like this, and if we have?
Well, again, it goes to not a hundred percent of those, five hundred and eighty-five jobs that come from Ottawa County alone, but they just come from a multi-county area, and I would say certainly that there's that number of job seekers out there that.
Would it, 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 which Port Clinton tour?
I think there could be some positions, I don't think all of the positions people would move from another community to come here for, but there could be some positions.
Anyone else?
Art Bell, one twenty-nine Washington Street. I've worked in a hotel for a couple of years, and when it comes in the wintertime, you may work only twenty hours a week. You may have one girl doing sixteen rooms, which I have done, so, but in the summer you may have eight or nine working, and it's only from nine o'clock until about one or one-thirty, maybe two. And that said, you have to be done by one or two o'clock. So, you know, it's, in the, in the summer, in the winter, a lot of people are going to be out of work. Because a lot of them would get laid off, and they keep the ones that have the most seniority on. And the other ones, the one hotel I worked at, they brought foreigners, I mean, you know, really nice girls, to work, and then when it was done, they were gone. And then there was only like three ladies left to do for the whole winter. So you're working maybe twenty hours a week.
I think one thing though, to keep in mind is the Washington Properties proposal is talking about a conference center, and doing some things to elongate the season and even make it a twelve-month season, now, not a twelve-month season where there's going to be activity of July, you know, July every week, that would be the hope, but realistically, I mean, the project's purpose and target is to be a year-round business, so, you know, certainly understand that perspective, but also understand the perspective and the hope that this could become something that is more year-round, that's the nature, to help support the orgs.
I would just mention, I, I'm going to bring up an, our article I saw in Material Blade this morning on the Jeep plant, going to hire a thousand people, guess what, they're all part-time. This is not just something that's indicative of retail, it's manufacturing, it's some government areas, part-time jobs, so this is not something that's just strictly a retail thing, I mean, so I just want to throw that out there, you know. So this, I guess what I'm trying to say, it's the condition of the economy we're in right now. In any, in my opinion, any new job to a community is a good job. This, this, a project such as this will bring new income into your community. You're right, there, there are going to be some, there'll be some costs associated with local government services, and we've not quantified those here today. And I don't, I'm not an expert in doing that, so you have the contract, or Jamie or the council will have the contract with somebody else to do that, but overall, I see this being as a net benefit to the community, both on jobs and income.
Thank you very much. We'll take a five-minute break so that Hans and Jamie can undo here. If you had only come for this presentation and you want to leave, now would be the time to leave. I do want to make one comment, we are going to have this sent to us electronically, so if you wish to have a copy of this, simply notify Jen at City Hall, or email one of your consultants and request your copy, and we will send you one of your copies.
Well, and also the problem is, like, you can just go and look at the financials of the city and say, it was projected to increase five million, and it increased five million, and say it was, it was successful, because it could be in something else, broken somewhere else, you know what I mean? Or it could have been a contraction somewhere else, where it should have, the project really brought in six million, you know what I mean? If our, if our July looks like our December, that means our town is literally dead, because December is a little bit like our July.
I'll go with you. I don't.
Days from now, thirteen years, that's going to be weird. And also, like, people that came, giving the ship. That's true. But it's, um, that's, I mean, I don't think it'd make too much of an event. It's a three-day event. A three-day event, yeah. If it was like something, I mean, it's going to, it's going to make a lot. It's not like the day was, but it's going to make a, it would be a point five or so, even if that, I don't think. Still on it, it picks up a ten percent?
Nice, nice.
Oh, okay. Better job. So, you know.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started, and we will now go to the mayor's proposal.
Madam President, first off, I really would like to thank Jamie Boyer and Hans for bringing this report. And first, I really appreciate the price that you offered, that kind of service at no charge is, is great value. As you know, council's tried to move forward before. The expense of that is truly amazing to me. So I just want to thank you very much. Also, if I could, ordinance zero five dash fourteen, the sum for safe routes to school. As many know, we've been very successful with the cooperation of the school system. See, Mr. Atkins back there, and I think we've proven it's a great way to get kids around. So we're asking clean requests through the Ohio Department of Transportation. It does require a cost of the city's end for engineering, approximately about thirty-eight thousand dollars with the whole project, approximately three hundred and eight three thousand dollars. And it provides obviously safe routes for the kids. And that is it.
Thank you. Auditors reporting.
Thank you, Madam President.
Treasurers reporting.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Law directors reporting. Safety Service Director reporting.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of things, uh, we're moving cemetery cleanup to April seventh. Had a lot of calls with the bad weather and other things, so we're going to move it to April seventh. Please have your stuff off by April seventh. Obviously, be careful going home to Paris Square. We had a big time water break there today. The guys are still working on that right now, so we have a mess there. And be careful with the upcoming weather. From the reports I've got, we're going to have a heck of a storm tomorrow morning. And so please be careful, our guys will be out, take care. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Police Chiefs reporting.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Fire Chiefs reporting.
Uh, bye.
Under correspondence, I have from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a liquor license transfer from Three J Hospitality LLC, doing business as the Big Sky Saloon, to, and I am not going to pronounce this correctly, to the Cielo Grande LLC, doing business as the Cielo Grande Tapas Bar. The address is one seventeen Madison Street. The principal owner is William Davis.
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to waive our right to the transfer.
I have a motion to waive our right to the transfer. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Trowley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Also, under correspondence, I have a note from Salvation Army, and it says, Dear Mike and Council, on behalf of the Salvation Army Idaho County Service Center staff and advisory committee, I would like to thank you for your commitment to volunteer during the bell for our 2013 Red Kettle Campaign. Your service is extremely appreciated and valued. Because of volunteers like you, this year's campaign total was sixty thousand five hundred and, five hundred dollars and seventy cents. Also, because of your generosity and eagerness to volunteer during our Red Kettle Campaign, we are able to raise funds to provide emergency services assistance for basic needs, such as emergency shelter, rent, mortgage, and mortgage. Utility assistance, clothing, prescription, and food assistance for so many of the local families in Idaho County. Again, we thank you for your commitment to our local Salvation Army unit, our programs, and our local residents in need. Sincerely, Marine Secondary Director of Salvation Army. I need a motion to accept the correspondence as stated, and also the finance committee of February eighteenth, twenty fourteen, the Laws, Rules, and Ordinance Committee meeting of February twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen, and the auditorium report for which you received by the email.
Madam President, can you make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Trowley. I have a second. Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, we are now going to the reading of ordinance and resolutions. I would ask for a motion to add ordinance zero six dash fourteen to tonight's agenda.
So, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. I have a, I'll need a second. Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion about adding that to the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There are no third reading of ordinance and resolutions. Under second readings of ordinance and resolutions, would the court please read by title and summary only ordinance zero four dash fourteen. Ordinance zero four dash fourteen, an ordinance amending section five seven seven, excuse me, five, five, seven point two three of the codifying ordinances of the city and declaring an emergency. Does council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance zero four dash fourteen? Seeing none, we will move that to the next meeting for its third reading of March twenty-fifth. Would the court please read by title and summary under new readings of ordinances and resolutions, ordinance zero five dash fourteen. Ordinance zero five dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing directing the Director of Safety and Service to apply to the Ohio Department of Transportation for safe routes to school funding for a city project and declare an emergency. Does council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance zero five dash fourteen? Mrs. DeFries.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the required readings on zero five dash fourteen.
I have a motion to waive the required readings on ordinance zero five dash fourteen. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that motion, please, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion on the waiving of the readings? Seeing none, would the court please call the roll? Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Nicole de Fritis?
Yes.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance zero five dash fourteen?
I'd like to make a motion that we retain the emergency clause of zero five dash fourteen.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on ordinance zero five dash fourteen. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? Seeing none, would the court please call the roll? Nicole de Fritis?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Thank you. Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance zero five dash fourteen?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance zero five dash fourteen.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance zero five dash fourteen. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any discussion? Mrs. DeFries.
Yeah, and just like I say, we discussed this in the infrastructure committee, and we voted to recommend passage of ordinance zero five dash fourteen.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would the court please call the roll? Nicole de Fritis?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance zero five dash fourteen passed. Would the court please read by title and summary only ordinance zero six dash fourteen? Ordinance zero six dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing a directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into an LPA federal local LET project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the improvement of Second Street and declaring an emergency. Does council wish to take any action this evening on ordinance zero six dash fourteen? Seeing none, we will move that to the March twenty-fifth meeting for a second reading. Now we'll go to business from the floor, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a finance committee meeting next Tuesday evening, six-thirty, in the meeting room adjacent. In late summer of last year, shortly after Washington Properties made their, their second presentation to the community, in this chamber, I made a motion to directing the mayor, in essence directing the mayor and his negotiating team, to go into talks with, with Washington Properties to develop a plan of action and, and get a little bit more information for it. That evening, that motion was seconded, and subsequently, there was a three-to-three vote, which was, the time vote was cast by, or the deciding vote rather, was cast by President Hartwell in favor of moving forward with that. The following week, a motion was put forth by another council member, which was subsequently seconded, that in essence would have stopped any of those, those future cuts. That motion was defeated five to two. So in essence, that, that action is still, is still in place. However, in that time period, there have been many, many changes, a lot of new faces sit at this table. And as a matter of fact, those, those five dissenting votes were cast by three individuals that, that don't sit up here anymore. So I think it's, it's pretty prudent, after hearing the Washington Properties' presentation last week, the economic impact presentation this week, that we get the idea of how the people sitting at this, at this table now, what they feel about this, and should we continue with what we did. I know this is kind of strange, but it's kind of a big, big issue. So therefore, Madam President, would you pass it on to Leah? I have this document. I'd like to make a motion that this council restate to the administration our strong desire to move Port Clinton forward, and ask that Mayor Vincent Leon and his negotiating team give the utmost focus, focus and attention to working with Washington Properties to discuss, organize, and present a plan of implementation for development of the fourteen plus or minus acres of commercially zoned land offered by the city of Port Clinton for said purpose. Additionally, and in accordance with state law, this plan should be presented to city council for consideration and further action within the earliest possible timeframe allowed by the parties involved.
I have a motion on the floor, as stated by Mr. Snyder. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. DeFries. Any discussion? I do have a, a note from Mr. Beal. It says, Madam President, President, given my plan, the absence at the March eleventh regular meeting, I would like to provide my comments on the negotiations with Washington Properties. I have found the overview of the Waterworks project to be positive and worthy of further consideration by the city. Therefore, I support continued negotiations between the city administration and Washington Properties. If I were to have the opportunity to run on such a motion today, my vote would be yes. Kind regards, Gabe Beal, Councilman Ford Ford. Any other discussion? Seeing none, would the court please call the roll? Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Nicole de Fritis?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder's motion has passed. Anything else this evening?
Not this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Votes aren't cast willy-nilly. Votes aren't cast without thought. Votes aren't cast without understanding consequences. I know that every one of my colleagues feels the same way, and we thoroughly understand and realize what this vote means. And we place our trust in our administration and the negotiating team to find out what is best for the city, bring it back to council, and then at that point in time, hopefully, we can have a decision which will benefit all of our community. Madam President, I would also like to inform the community that the West End Connoisseur Group will be meeting next Monday night, which would be March seventeenth, at, I believe, at six o'clock at Ploton Intermediate School. The media may be in the media center. I believe that's the one where another group is using the cafeteria, so. It's not the cafeteria, but we'll be there to inform you where the meeting will take place. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Mrs. Sardi?
Um, I'd just like to thank Jamie and Hans for coming to this and everything that, that helps to see all that in front of you from life to life. And as we're talking, there's a lot of luck that's happening to this. And to move forward, to be a good person.
Mr. Trowley?
First off, I'd like to give some praise to Nicole and her family, who are lost. Um, on three eighteen, at five-thirty, will be the next emergency services meeting. And I back, everything runs, so I couldn't have said it any better. Thank you.
Mrs. DeFries? I have a number. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Phillips?
I agree with Mr. Ackerman. We need to move forward carefully, hope we need to move forward, and the Laws, Rules, and Ordinance next meeting will be two weeks from this evening at six-thirty.
Members of the audience.
Vicki Clemmons, three three zero Terry Street. Mayor, Madam President, I mean, the members of council, I had an email out earlier, or yesterday, I think. Today is the anniversary of Lucas Kinga. I'd like you to remember the people of Japan, three years later, still struggling, and he must becoming a global disaster. But locally, to the point, are they discussing as an issue? And with a giant mumble, you've heard about it, the twenty-five-foot void in the concrete, the American shield building. And apparently, the NRC has decided not to have public hearings on the reason for the void in the concrete. I'm just asking tonight that the city go to the NRC and ask that they do follow through. That is their job to keep the, the public safe. According to the Union of Concerned Scientists, only two percent of the NRC budget actually goes to inspections. And, and that's the problem with the concrete void. How did, it's a quality assurance issue. How did First Energy miss it? How did the contractor miss it? How did the NRC miss it? That's what we should be asking the NRC to tell us, members of the public. Public, if you could do that officially by the city, I'd love it. Individually, people can call the NRC and ask for a public hearing. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question, totally related to anything. Susan Vayner, six four two one one, Brad. Who do I contact regarding having a, um, no through-street sign put at the beginning of my block? I constantly have cars speeding up my street, realizing it's a dead end, slamming on their brakes, tearing up my lawn, peeling out the other night, emitting black smoke, didn't I? This happens multiple times in that action. Who do I contact for that sign?
Contact me, if you're a caller, call Jen, and she'll set it up.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Vicky?
Um, Vicky, two-two-two, Adam. This is directed to the council tonight. Many of you weren't here the last time the council made a motion to go in the negotiations, that being with Poehler. And after a couple of months, Poehler pulls out, and we citizens paid a hundred and twenty-five-plus thousand dollars for that little fowl. Tonight, you all voted to go into negotiations. On land, it may not be yours. How are you going to rationalize that as fiscal responsibility? You had a lot to say before, why stay silent now?
Anyone else? Mr. Noah?
When they expect to get figures on what the cost of the project will be to the city, or the county for that matter, and, and what will be the mechanism for doing that? Who's going to be responsible, and what do you see in timeframe?
We'll all come out in negotiations. That is a team that I put together personally as mayor. We are looking at adding people to that, to have the expertise to, to interject in this. But those are discussions that'll happen in negotiations.
Why would the cost to the city be a part of negotiations with the developer?
There are many layers, and there's not enough time to see and explain all those different layers of negotiations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Five of the votes tonight weren't a surprise to me. There was one that was a total surprise to me. And I'll explain why, because, you know, right now, the city's being asked to come up with six million dollars for public improvements to, to the site. And these improvements could include, but are not limited to, the following: boardwalk, marina, amphitheater, walking paths, playground and picnic areas, streets and utilities, and enhancement of Derby Pond. Other than maybe the marina, it sure sounds like park stuff, doesn't it? At the August thirteenth, twenty thirteen meeting of city council, Mr. Ackerman, you estimated that it would take two million dollars to make Waterworks Park a destination park. You ask, and I quote, "Do we have two million dollars to put into that park to turn it into a place where people can come here to go? Do we have two million dollars in the city books to change that to a destination park? Do we have?" Do we have anyone in town willing to drop two million dollars of their own money to turn that into something that it belongs to be?" If you can come up with someone who has two million dollars to do it, I will be the first to tell Mike Rose, "We don't need you. We have our own two million dollars to fix our park, to make it someplace we want it to be." If we can get six million dollars to fix the park for Mr. Rose, not Mr. Rose, Mr. Rose's project, Washington Properties' project, three times what you wanted, Mr. Ackerman, we sure as hell ought to be able to get two million to fix the park for the citizens. That is, if council really wants to try. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Atkins?
Pat Atkins, seven-one-four Jackson Drive, Port Clinton, Ohio, Washington Properties, thank you, glad you're here.
You've already spoken.
I have a question, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Atkins, um, I learned on social media that Anne-Marie Schools have cancer tomorrow. I'm all for that. I'm pretty much a share of that information. I'm sorry, thank you.
Mrs. Phillips? Mrs. Phillips?
I don't know if I can make myself heard or not, but how many of you council people contacted any of your constituents and asked them how they felt? Nobody has been in my neighborhood, and I asked several people, and I don't even know who he is. Mr. Trowley? Really, the citizens don't have a vote in anything now.
Anyone else this evening? Roger Smith?
Yeah, Roger Smith, two-eighteen West Forest Street. Uh, here, a couple council meetings ago, uh, we talked about the festivals that we have down in that park, and there was, um, one point two million dollars brought into the city that, uh, is, is, is from that, that one festival we have at the Walleye Festival. Uh, is that gonna show any impact on the money of the city taking out? By not having it there? You know, are we, uh, is, that is gonna be an impact to all citizens here, Main Street people, Walmart, all of it? Has that been taken into consideration, that that will probably not ever happen again I don't know where you get the information from. I got that... Excuse me, the Main Street Board is sitting right there, they're put it on. I would strongly suggest you ask them. I'm sure they'd love to comment to that. But you wanted, you wanted to know where I got that information? It was from the article that, that Mrs. DeFries wrote as a thesis.
We had a spokesperson tonight, thank you.
I'm John Madison, from nine-oh-three Fulton Street, Portland. Um, as far as, and I'm a member of Main Street, have been for a while, um, as far as the Walleye Festival happening, we're still gonna make that happen.
Where?
Um, that'll be decided after we decide the rest. We've already talked to the carnival, they've got no problems, they can upset... Has anyone been to Bucyrus and seen there, they have like a bright festival? Yeah, they do it right down the middle of the street. So us having a Walleye Festival is not an issue to us, we're pretty sure we can pull that off. And I was going to, um, state this, this is just one of the things, this is Main Street's vision statement, and this is just one thing, and by the way, I want to thank you very much for moving ahead with Washington Properties, and this is what gets me excited about being involved with Main Street. Accessible by water or land, downtown Portland, a popular destination on Lake Erie, is a thriving community welcoming residents and visitors alike to enjoy the unique shops, excellent restaurants, year-round entertainment, and cultural activities located within beautifully restored historic downtown. Now, I know that that's leaning a little bit down, towards downtown, that's where my heart lies. If we could achieve this, think what a beautiful thing that would be, and I think Mr. Rose can help us.
One more, um, please, please, don't make me think that you have a... Um, no, Mr. Smith?
Okay.
You're done. Uh, Mr. Philabon, you'll be our last comment for this evening.
Here at Philabon, one-twenty-one Wall Street. One question I had is, uh, to the councilman, um, they claimed before that they went around to their wards, and eighty-five, fifty to eighty-five percent of the people said they did not want condos. Well, they just changed the name from a condo to a lodge, same situation, and I think it's a conflict of interest that we got two people, a council, that deal with rental properties. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments this evening, we will take a motion to adjourn, Mr. Snyder.
Madam President, I move this august body adjourn.
Take a second, Mr. Trowley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.